Hello, everyone. Welcome to the preview of the November 18th, 2024 special town meeting. Today, we'll walk through each and every warrant article that has been presented for the special town meeting. The meeting will be held at 7:00 PM at the Oak Middle School Auditorium. All town meeting members and other residents are able to attend this meeting, and we look forward to the opportunity to discuss the 14 warrant articles that are presented for consideration. We will take time this afternoon to talk about the details behind the warrant articles and the purpose of those, the introduction of the articles. So we'll start off. I'll have Assistant Town Manager for Administration and Finance, David Snowden, begin the conversation with Article One.
Excellent. Good afternoon, Mr. Mizikar. Article One, the appropriation for the 300th anniversary celebration. This article seeks to appropriate from taxation $15,000 for the costs associated with the Town of Shrewsbury 300th celebration. Town meeting members may recall from the May 2024 annual town meeting a similar article. Mr. Mizikar, could you explain the difference and how these funds would be used?
Sure. So we established a special fund that you referenced at a previous town meeting, but there's limitations on the timing on when funds from that are deposited and that can't be spent. They're only permitted to be expended one year prior to and the year of, and then one year after the actual celebration, which occurs in 2027. We have a very ambitious committee that's looking to do a year-long event. And in order to give them the resources they need to pull off that type of activity, they're going to need to expend the funds in advance of the limitations set under the special account that's been set up. So this would just be putting funds into a general warrant article that would be proposed for use by the committee and then approved through Town Manager's office.
Excellent. Thank you.
So as we traditionally do at the special town meeting, we need to make some adjustments to the operating budget, and that's Article Two. Mr. Snowden, would you mind walking through those changes and providing just a little bit of background on some of the largest?
Of course, yep. So Article Two adjusts the FY25 operating budget. This article seeks to make critical adjustments totaling $1,367,000 or roughly 0.74% over the FY25 budget passed at the May annual town meeting across eight different departments. If we were to work through these numerically by department number, the first $10,000 increase is for the Treasure Collector's Office, reflecting expenses with the town's tax title attorney in review of the FY18 through '22 tax takings. Moving forward, this budget line item would reflect a single year's worth of takings as opposed to multiple years. Probably one of the biggest single adjustments would be $585,000 to increase the operating support health insurance line item. Thus far, there have been approximately 127 new plans enrolled in FY25 across town and school employees across a number of different categories, whether it was new hire, open enrollment, or qualifying events. In the fire department, we're seeking $122,000 for the salary and wage line items due to a number of firefighters being out of service. One firefighter injured on duty for the past four months, another one out with no return date set, and another employee out on leave since the end of July with no date set in time. These funds help cover the costs of overtime for the firefighters that are filling those spots. Next, $500,000 increase to the pension contribution system to help address prior-year market losses in FY22. There will be a transfer from the Public Works Administration to the Town Manager's office to fund the Assistant to the Town Manager procurement position. This position was previously existed within the Public Works Division as a procurement specialist, and we want to continue to build off the good work that was done and centralize this position in the Town Manager's office to improve all aspects of our public procurement process. We have $50,000 increase to the town's streetlight budget based on the electricity rate adjustments effective September 2024. And then lastly, a $100,000 one-time appropriation to the education budget to support electrical and security upgrades in the school buildings. Again, in total, Article Two seeks to make critical adjustments amounting to $1,367,000 to the FY25 operating budget.
Great. And if you could just tell us where those funds are coming from? Are they recurring revenue sources or one-time?
These are all recurring revenue sources.
Great.
Correct.
Article Three, we also look to make adjustments to capital expenditures for fiscal year 25. I know there's two items that we're looking to acquire. Would you mind walking through those two investments?
Yep. Again, building off the last item, these would be recurring funds as well raised through taxation. This article proposes to make amendments to the capital improvement budget for two vehicles, one for a fire department vehicle and one for the replacement of a hybrid police cruiser that was totaled in an accident earlier this year. The town's insurance will cover the replacement costs of the cruiser. However, the supplemental funds identified here and the amount of approximately $50,000 are needed to cover the costs of upfitting the vehicle and replacing necessary equipment and technology within the cruiser.
Great. So that takes us to Article Four within the special town meeting warrant, which is providing funding into the override stabilization account.
Excellent, yep. All right. So this article seeks to deposit $368,958 into the special purpose override stabilization fund. These funds would be reserved for future appropriation by town meeting to fund the operations of municipal and education departments, as well as shared operating support expenses for various other departments. The use of the special fund is the centerpiece of the commitment that the Select Board and the school committee made to the town in prolonging the duration of the funds raised on the approved ballot question May 4, 2021. The current balance of the override stabilization account as of the end of October is $9,111,507, which includes the May annual town meeting appropriation of $1,273,213. The revised FY25 balance would be $9,480,465, with a total contribution between annual town meeting and the special town meeting article of $1,632,173. And at present, the override balance is projected to run through FY29 for a total of eight years since initially implemented.
Great. So those are the core financial adjustments that we need to make. We traditionally make those type of adjustments at the fall town meeting as we've learned more information from the time that we left the annual town meeting in May and also the state has finalized their budget process. The state, of course, provides us with our second-largest revenue source through general aid to the community that can be used for a variety of purposes, the largest portion of which can be used for education. So continuing along the line of financial articles, but something a little bit more unique than adjustments to the operating or capital funds is Article Five, which is transportation network company funding appropriation. So I'll introduce Alex Martinez, who's Assistant to the Town Manager, Management Analyst, to talk about the purpose of this article.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Article Five seeks to appropriate $29,936 that the town has received from the state's Transportation Infrastructure Fund in fiscal years 2021, 2022, and 2023. Transportation Network Companies, or TNCs, like Uber and Lyft, are required to report data annually on rides that originate in each city and town in Massachusetts. A per-ride assessment fee of 20 cents is credited to the fund, and cities and towns receive an assessment of 50% of that, or 10 cents, for each ride that originates in their community. These funds must be used for sidewalk, crosswalk, and pedestrian mobility initiatives, as well as other programs that support alternative modes of transportation. The town has received approximately $64,000 in TNC funds since the fund's inception in 2018, and to date, the town has expended almost $32,000 on eligible projects, including the development of a sidewalk management plan, solar flashing crosswalk beacons, flashing traffic signs, and the repair and replacement of a handicap sidewalk ramp.
Great. Thank you so much. Article Six is looking to provide specific funding for the Municipal Facilities Optimization Project that has been underway since the late spring of 2024. I'm happy to introduce Assistant Town Manager for Operations Keith Baldinger to walk through the purpose behind this article for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. As stated, the Municipal Facilities Optimization Committee was established earlier this year by the Select Board. It addresses critical space and repair needs at 205 or 211 South Street, which is our DPW Yard and the Town Hall. Demonstrating foresight, the Select Board allocated ARPA funds to support a feasibility study and a conceptual design emphasizing a commitment to fiscal responsibility and long-term planning. The DPW facilities at South Street are the most deteriorated and undersized of all town facilities, limiting effective service delivery for residents and businesses and impacting our ability to support our dedicated employees. The committee's charge included evaluating options for the repair, renovation, expansion, or replacement of these facilities. Additionally, the committee is tasked with finding ways to alleviate space constraints at Town Hall where insufficient room has impacted both public service and staff accommodations. By integrating DPW functions currently at Town Hall into the South Street site, the plan promotes operational efficiency and improves resident access to services across all town departments. The recommendation emphasizes energy efficiency and sustainability, with replacement and upgrades prioritized over costly renovations, ensuring a fiscally responsible approach to the town's present and future needs. In this next phase, we'll focus on advancing the design of the DPW campus while also addressing critical needs at Town Hall. This includes developing efficient mechanical and life safety systems, ensuring full accessibility, and thoughtfully programming the space to better serve residents and support the work of town departments and staff. Through this article, we are requesting the town meeting appropriate funds to complete 60% design documents for both locations. This phase will refine project details and the budget, preparing us for a full funding request at the spring town meeting. Article Six is a $2 million request to fund the owner's project manager, designer, and construction manager at risk through the 60% design process. This level of design is the industry standard for confirming project budgets and program requirements.
Great. Thank you so much. That takes us to Article Seven, which is seeking the town adopt what is known as the prudent investment rule for our trust funds. Broadly, municipal investments of our cash that we have on hand, whether it's for a particular purpose or broad purposes, is limited on where it can be invested, and it's limited through the state laws. There's been some recent changes to state law, and we look to take advantage of that. Mr. Snowden, would you mind talking about what particular changes we're looking to make and how it will impact the town?
Of course, yep. The FY24 state budget, Chapter 28 of the Acts of 2023, included a change to the standards for investment of trust funds in municipalities, allowing investment in accordance with the prudent investor rule, MGL Chapter 203(c), which essentially allows for a broader range of investments for a particular set of funds. So what does this really mean? It means greater diversification for the town's assets. Currently, funds may not be invested in the, may only be invested through the Commonwealth of Massachusetts legal lists, which is limited to those often referred to as blue-chip stocks. Under this legal list, investments are conservative and the potential for growth is limited. Many of the permissible investments, like bonds, are sensitive to interest change rates, and when interest rates rise, the value of existing bonds can decrease, impacting the return on the investments. The list tends to focus on traditional fixed income securities, which may limit the ability to diversify into other assets like equities, real estate, or international markets. Conservative investments, like government bonds, may not keep up with the pace with inflation, which erodes purchasing power over time, and this can be a problem for long-term funds that need to maintain their value. An important note, not all of the town's trust funds are eligible for this investment with the prudent investment rule. The following stabilization trust funds, amounting to approximately $16.2 million, would not be eligible: water, sewer, cemetery, town general stabilization, and the town override stabilization. Eligible trust funds amounting to approximately $10 million include the Affordable Housing Trust, the Charitable Trust Funds, the Library Trust Funds, the School Trust Funds, and Cemetery Trust Funds. Final comment would be to remind town meeting members that the town's OPEB trust established in 2011 has operated under the prudent investor rule and has realized an annualized gain of 5.72% since inception, whereas the remaining trust funds have realized an annualized gain of 3.21%. And this, I see, is a really important factor when we consider the risk in diversifying the funds.
Great. So 2.5% investment returns over those funds that we've invested prudently through that particular rule, which we had previously been allowed. So we're just looking to move other funds into that type of investment structure?
Correct.
Great. Thank you so much. So that takes us to Article Eight, which we are looking to make some adjustments to the personnel bylaw. I'm pleased to introduce Human Resources Director Christina Ordung to talk about the details behind this article and why we are seeking town meeting's approval of this initiative.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. This article proposes to amend the personnel bylaw. These changes are designed to maintain the competitiveness of the town's benefits available to town employees and streamline administrative processes to better align with current practices and legal standards. I can break these changes down into a few different categories. First, we are proposing several administrative changes, such as introducing new definitions and redefining some terms. Additionally, we are proposing to remove outdated language from the bylaw. We are also proposing authority changes to the bylaw to better align the language with how we're currently operating. Overall, these changes would ensure that the bylaw is modern, clear, and reflective of our current work practices. Next, we are proposing increasing vacation time by one week for each tenure band except for the top tier. This change aligns with trends in other local governments and the broader U.S. workforce. This adjustment strengthens the town's competitive edge in attracting top talent and will also aid in fostering a motivated, loyal, and productive workforce. Finally, the most significant of these changes is the introduction of Sick Leave Plan Four, a new sick leave plan that provides a more comprehensive and modern leave structure. This proposal closely aligns with the state's paid family and medical leave program and comes at a time when family medical leave is a prominent focus within private and public sector organizations in Massachusetts and beyond. Sick Leave Plan Four positions Shrewsbury competitively in employee support amongst other communities, state entities, and the private sector. This proposal is grounded in valuable feedback collected over the past several years from exit interviews, stay interviews, and employee wellness and workplace improvement surveys. Moreover, it represents the culmination of over two years of careful deliberation amongst town leadership from various departments, receiving strong support from the Personnel Board. Thank you for your consideration.
Great. Thank you so much, Christina, for that information and for proposing these changes with the Personnel Board. That takes us to Article Nine, which is zoning bylaw amendment in consideration of compliance with what is known as the MBTA Communities Act. I'm pleased to have Planning and Economic Development Director Christopher McGoldrick join us to talk about the MBTA article and the proposed outcomes.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. So this article proposes to establish a new overlay zoning district to comply with the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40a, Section 3a, also known as the MBTA Community Zoning Bylaw. The zoning overlay includes provisions to allow development of 15 residential units per acre or less by right within the overlay, and includes mixed-use provisions where the underlying district is commercial or industrial nature. This proposal is drafted by staff in February of this year in coordination with public engagement through community forums and an MBTA preference survey, and further refined through professional review by local and state authorities, including the Attorney General's Municipal Law Unit and the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, who would review the proposal for formal compliance. Due to this, we have an extremely high confidence level that this proposal would render our community compliant if adopted by town meeting. Through meetings and hearings with the Planning Board and Select Board, we have presented on our process for development of the proposal to date. Much of that information has been organized on the Planning Department webpage dedicated to this zoning proposal. I think it's important to reiterate the main objectives of our proposal based upon the findings of our public outreach and local discussion, and those were to maintain the commercial tax base in zoning where feasible, to limit overall net new unit growth, to limit the massing of allowable structures over the preservation of open space, to co-locate with existing infrastructure, housing, and density, and to maximize the number of SHI eligible units. With these goals in mind, our proposal has been drafted to primarily overlay parcels that either already have existing higher-density housing or are already approved or proposed for this type of development. Therefore, the net new units that could be built under the zoning beyond the existing conditions are limited to the extent possible while still achieving compliance with the state guidelines. We see this proposal as a viable path to compliance with the Massachusetts General Laws for the community to consider and have evaluated anticipated outcomes for both scenarios.
Great. Thank you, Mr. McGoldrick. Appreciate it.
All right. Moving to Article Ten, citizen petition brought forth by lead petitioner Greg Richards, seeking to amend the appointment authority for the Planning Board. Mr. Mizikar, can you provide any further information on this article?
Sure. So the article, as proposed, would change the appointment method for the Planning Board from being appointed by the position of the Town Manager to being positions that are elected through a popular vote. So they would no longer be appointed. I have a couple of comments that I would like to make on this article, as I feel that its adoption and approval by town meeting would be detrimental to the overall form of government that the town has enjoyed and benefited from since 1954. That form of government, at the time, given the growth of the community, sought to reduce the number of elected positions and allow for the professional management of all aspects of the executive functions of the municipality. At that time, this initiative was led by the Finance Committee because of the complexity of the town. Ironically, at that time, the annual budget was still only $1 million, but they saw the need for professional management throughout the operations of the community and looked to vest the power in the voters by electing a single Select Board who would be in charge of the entire responsibilities of the executive function of the local government, reducing the total number of elected officials or boards on the executive side from 11 down to the Select Board, and at the time, the Treasure Collector and the Town Clerk, which in subsequent years have been moved from elected positions into appointed positions themselves. I think it's important to look at the characteristics of positions whenever determining whether they should be appointed or elected, and these positions of the Planning Board are positions that have characteristics much more similar to appointed positions as they are executing and carrying out and recommending policy rather than setting and adopting policy. Our planning and development policies are set through the zoning bylaw, and that policy-setting authority is, of course, the legislative body of town meeting. So there would be an inherent conflict between elected bodies should the Planning Board stray beyond what their responsibilities would be. So I look forward to further discussion with this matter with the Finance Committee, who again led this petition back 70 years ago to ensure that we had stable and professionally-run local government operations, reducing the number of elected positions that we had and providing more power to voters and clarity in the actions that they would take and holding the Select Board responsible for the executive function within the community.
Thank you very much. Appreciate insightful feedback. I think now we're going to be moving towards the last few articles of the warrant. Is that correct?
Absolutely. So that takes us a whole way down to Article 11 of 14. And Article 11 starts for Community Preservation Act funded articles. And I'll work with Mr. McGoldrick here as we go through these. Mr. McGoldrick, would you describe Article 11, which is to install lightning protection on the First Congregational Church?
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. So this project proposes to appropriate $25,000 from the Historic Resources Reserve, an undesignated reserve, for installation of a lightning arrestor system on the First Congregational Church in Shrewsbury. The current building does not have any lightning protectors, and the installation would preserve the historic building in the event of a lightning surge. It also would bring the building into compliance with National Fire Protection Standard 780, protecting the historical building in the town center. It's also important to note that the existing spire houses telecommunications equipment, which serves the greater community in addition to the historical and community service considerations that this facility serves.
Great. Thank you. Article 12 is also related to the First Congregational Church. Would you mind going through that article?
Yep. So this project proposes to appropriate 5,200 from the Historic Resources Reserve and the Undesignated Reserve for the repair and replacement of the parlor window trim facade and gutter on the First Congregational Church. The existing trim and facade has water damage and rot. This work is complementary to the restoration work on the south side of the Meeting House that has recently been completed, and the exterior structural defect covered under this grant, if approved, would eliminate future water damage to the historic building. This is all exterior work. Any interior work would be addressed by the First Congregational Church.
So that takes us to Article 13, which also is related to the First Congregational Church. Chris, would you mind talking about that article for us?
Yeah. So this project proposes to appropriate $10,000 from the Historic Resources Reserve and the Undesignated Reserve to conduct an architectural study to evaluate options to repair the original wooden floor below the ground level of the building of the First Congregational Church. This location is utilized by Boy Scouts, robotics teams, and other public organizations that regularly meet there. The study would provide options for repairs needed to correct the current structural issues.
Great. Mr. McGoldrick, I think one really broad question that immediately comes to mind for these three articles would be whether or not it's allowable for public funds to be invested in any private organization, especially a church. So I know that Massachusetts has laid out very specific guidelines when it comes to this matter. Could you provide a little bit of comment on that?
Yeah. So that was a question that CPC members themselves raised in regards to the anti-aid amendment, and we did reach out to Town Council while evaluating these proposals to evaluate how to approach this with that context. That memo will be provided to town meeting members in their packets for their review. The bulk of that memo from Town Council is that the, a recommendation that the committee review what's called a three-piece test for the ability to fund those. So the committee did review that three-part test in relation to these projects. It's important to note that this facility also served as the original meeting house for the town, and so they did the three-part test, looked at that it is really serving the community in terms of these funds, and that has been provided to town meeting members.
Yeah, I do encourage folks to take a look at the history of the First Congregational Church if they never had. Of course, the establishment of a meeting house, which now is the Congregational Church, was an original requirement for the town to be incorporated. And so not this exact building, but a predecessor, which was too small and torn down, and this building reconstructed, was actually put in place prior to incorporation in the early 1700s, early 1720s. So encourage people to take a look at that and kind of understand the public purpose that is behind that. And that three-part test, of course, comes from a 2018 court case with the town of Acton, so it is easier to apply to a modern situation when thinking about the use of these funds. But that takes us to the final warrant article, Article 14, which is again a Community Preservation funded article, and this is related to the Continued Historic Gravestone Restoration Project.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. So this project proposes to appropriate $45,000 from the Historic Resources Reserve and Undesignated Reserve to fund the balance of the Mountain View Cemetery Historic Gravestones' Phase II Preservation and Restoration Project that was previously funded at the May 2024 annual town meeting. that was previously funded at the May 2024 Annual Town Meeting.
Great. Thank you so much. So we appreciate everyone taking the time to learn a little bit more about the 14 warrant articles associated with the November 18, 2024 Special Town Meeting. Again, it will occur at 7:00 on that date at the Oak Middle School Auditorium, our traditional meeting place for town meetings. If you have any questions, you can always reach out to anyone at the Town Hall. Specifically, you can email us at manager@shrewsburyma.gov. We'd be happy to answer your questions in advance of the meeting. Thank you for taking the time. I'm Town Manager Kevin Mizikar. Have a great day.